Regeneration, employability, fairness. But in the end, isn't that what we're all striving Liverpool to be? Isn't that what we're all waving towards? I call on all politicians, the private businesses, voluntary and tier sectors, to support the mayor's pledge to join other UK cities in gaining World Health Organisation age-friendly accreditation. To internationally recognise Liverpool as a city that has all these things and much, much more. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I call on councillor Sullivan now, please?
Okay. Thanks, Lord Mayor. Hi, Lord Mayor. It will come as no surprise that councillor Woodhouse made his speech would be on a topic so dear to him. His role and devotion as Mayor or Lead for older people surpasses many roles within this chamber. Long before he was appointed to Mayor or Lead, it was evident that the welfare of the matured person was already a top priority within the world that Gerard... His skills in organising events, fundraising and the writing of bids is in fact second to none. It's well documented and researched that loneliness, isolation and non-activity lead to many types of illnesses. So in effect, Lord Mayor, Gerard's role is one of preventative, holistic and indeed pastoral nature. It's no surprise to those of us that know Gerard on a personal level that he definitely inherited the caring gene from his mother Mary, who to this day is highly revered in the bad and streets Scotland Road area of the city for all the work she did in the seventies, eighties and nineties, championing women and getting the local women into the local jobs, especially in the politeca. We are now informed, Lord Mayor, at government level from the Office of National Statistics, that the baby boom generation, people born in the 1960s, are the loneliest and within this decade, people in their 40s, 50s and 60s, living alone has increased by 23%. Health secretary Jeremy Hunt has urged people to invite elderly relatives into their homes and to say, and I quote, "It's a national shame that as many as 800,000 people in this country are chronically lonely." Lord Mayor, I personally equate sitting in this chamber as going to church. As my dad used to say, "It's not what you do in church, it's what you do when you come out that counts." And I say that Gerard, councillor Woodhouse, is the finest example of this. Please support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Owen?
First of all, huge congratulations to everybody who's made the maiden speech. Ten out of ten, everybody. Thank you, Lord Mayor. In my opinion, this is an incredibly important motion and should be supported by all of us in this chamber regardless of which party we represent. We must all work to ensure that Liverpool gains the World Health Organisation accreditation and to ensure the wellbeing and health of our elderly people. Our great city needs to be accredited so that we can further support those in need. People, as we know, are living longer these days and many will need extra support and help to survive. This has to be managed despite the most appalling and stringent budget cuts we are suffering in our adult health social care budgets. It is appalling. I echo councillor Woodhouse's praise for the support given by the RSLs, by our city council staff, Jackie Connolly and many others too numerous to mention. Without their help and support, these events just would not take place. I am privileged to attend these events. I don't particularly like the bingo, but I love the cabaret sessions, the parties, the trips out and the Older Peoples Awards. I've seen firsthand what a difference it makes to the lives of many of our residents. I talked to them. One lady in particular told me that these events had changed her life. It had made her life worthwhile. She now had people to talk to, people to socialise with. And of course, my friend, I can't say it, it's Shire, Gerard. Gerard is a local hero. Isolation and loneliness can be devastating to people, especially those who have no family or friends to support them. Imagine living alone day after day, looking at four walls or the television, could be for months. These people need our support and this is one way of providing it. I commend councillor Woodhouse for his unstinting efforts and long may they continue. We all need to support the mayor, Mayor Anderson, in this so that we regain this accreditation. It is essential. I did ask Gerard when I was getting my older person's award and our shy retired councillor said, "You're not old enough." Now, that is despite the fact I had a bus pass for five years and I've got a significant birthday next week. I take it as a compliment. But seriously, it is important that we all support this because who knows, any one of us in this chamber today could need extra help and support in later life. Please support this motion.
Councillor Woodhouse should have the right to be applying. Can we say that's all in favour? Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can we now move on to motion 15? The EU referred in by councillor Shannon Connolly, Mitch Law and Paul Brandt. Can I invite councillor Shannon Connolly to move the motion standard in NA and advise the council?
Look, just before you do, I recently attended the EU Parliament. Depending on which way you view the structure of the trip, just because it might amount to peculiar interest, I would declare it as such. Leave the room, won't take part and will ask for my name to be taken off the motion. That's okay. So you'll be delighted and I won't be able to speak on this particular motion. Probably increase the quality of the debate.
Can I?
Lord Mayor, can I clarify your interest because I want to hear your response.
Is there any more declaration?
Sorry, my lord, but can we ask the chief executive for a point of clarification? There's a number of who attended the European Parliament and for a bit of excuse or something, half the chamber may have to leave at this stage.
Well, happy to clarify. The wording about description of disposable peculiar interest, as you'll appreciate, is tighter than it used to be. So now if it's any payment or provision of any of the financial benefits other than from your council or authority made or provided within the relevant period in respect of any expenses incurred by your carryout duties or the number or towards your election expenses. So is that understand if you've received any money in connection with the European Parliament visit you scrapped, it'd be better to be allowed to go change the minute.
In that case, I shall pass on the same apologies and leave the room.
I don't know where, if you're opening one, being on show, you look. Anyone else being on the show? I'm surprised.
We're just seeking clarification because there's quite more of us up in the chamber, I suspect. If that's the case.
You'll have to, whether I, I went lobbying for more money for this because...
Can we just have some quiet, please, the chief exec?
Lord Mayor, the exchange group just standing here affected yourself, but there's two issues that are at play here. The first is in connection with who pays the expenses. So if you have been expensed to go to a trip to the European Commission or Parliament and the council has paid or another body, that's one thing. If the EU has paid, you've clearly got a conflict around that particular issue. Second point applies for a period of 12 months and that period 12 months applies retrospectively from today to November 2014. So before, within that category, you've had to be outside the chamber.
Well, if you're not one of the people who are being admitted and they pay my expenses, I should be as well.
If anybody's left in the chamber, then we might be able to pursue.
Okay, can we?
Lord Mayor, Chris has gone out to explain that to them. Half of them probably to be able to... Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay, can we now resume meeting and I believe all the members who need to defer their interest have now left the chamber. So can I advise the council about this? Will be councillor Shannon Connolly's maiden speech. Shannon?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for everyone else who's left the chamber. It is my maiden speech and if there is any long pauses, feel free to clap along the way. On Sunday, I along with many of my council colleagues attended the service of remembrance and of course today is Remembrance Day. It recalled specifically the many horrors of the Great War when for over four years war raged fiercely in York at great human and economic cost. A war that left millions dead, minds and bodies broken, economies shattered and set in motion a sequence of events that would shape the face half of the 20th century. If the past 70 years had been freed from this plight, it is no small measure thanks to the European Union. It is thanks to the peace and posterity which has been achieved through the cohesion and integration of the foundation of European Coal and Steel Community and its gradual transformation into the European Union of 28 nations have brought. In all honesty, Britain could at best be described as a reluctant European. Having joined in 1973, our membership has already sufficed one referendum in 1975. Indeed, at present, any outcome of any future referendum is far from certain. Yet for Liverpool, a city Tory politicians were prepared to leave to the cruel fate of managed decline in the 1980s. The long-term economic consequence of a decade of factionism continued to exert a grip. Our city has suffered. With poor economic potential, we lost industry, skills and jobs. Between the 1980s and 90s, the city's population reduced by 22% and jobs by 18%. Europe has been a lifeline. Europe has been the means of helping to provide our city the bright future that its heritage, reputation and most of all, the people deserve. It is a significant catalyst for this lifeline came with the classification of Objective One status in 1994. It was the start of a fruitful partnership between Liverpool and York. It was also recognition that Liverpool, once the most important port in the empire, had been reduced to one of the most deprived regions in York. The future of the people in our city has been significantly changed by European funding. That change has been both meaningful and permanent. Not only that the funding results in major inward investment, it also provides a catalyst for future economic growth. In my world, I represent Alison and Hunt's Crocs. I often hear people ask, "What has York ever done for me?" The answer is simple. Our city, our region has received more than £2 billion in EU funding. The lion's share received by Liverpool, that's 50,000 jobs being created in the city region as a result of EU funding. Liverpool John Lennon Airport received funding towards an £84 million investment programme. Liverpool secured £15 million to regenerate the rundown roadworks area of the city, successfully transforming the area into a vibrant and attractive place for new businesses. Liverpool Arena and Conference Centre, the largest project supported by the Objective One programme, has provided a multi-use arena at the King's Dock. Since opening in 2008, has hosted hundreds of events and conferences along with the £480 million economic impact from its two and a half million visitors and delegates between 2012 and 2015. The youth employment initiative, £19 million allocated to Liverpool City Region to support unemployed 16 to 19 year olds back into work, back into education and back into training, which has resulted in a considerable drop in youth unemployment from 25% to 16%. AKME, established to support the creative industry sector, there's so many, I could go on. Since becoming a councillor in May, I have spent time with Liverpool Vision and have seen some of this fantastic work. The EU provides a resource that is stable and provides access to finance and potential to do projects which ordinarily may not have been possible. Under the current UK government, Liverpool have faced unprecedented cuts. The EU funding resource becomes an important line of investment for Liverpool and the city region to continue key projects, schemes and initiatives. But there are also many other benefits of the EU. As a proud training unionist, I am grateful for the work, benefits and protection. The EU is the biggest single market in the world. Membership means businesses in Liverpool can sell their products to 5 million customers. Since the establishment of the free movement of people between European states, tourism has soared in Liverpool and the visitor economy is worth 3.8 billion to the city region. Our relationship with Europe has gave our city and our people the bright future they deserve. Let us send the message to the rest of the UK that Liverpool, the European capital of culture in 2008, is proud to be part of the EU and will be supporting the Yes campaign.
We have noted that an amendment by councillor Crowe, is it second? Councillor Crowe?
Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor. Excellent maiden speech, councillor Connor, congratulations on that. Now, Green Party also support staying in the EU, who will be campaigning with a yes vote alongside other parties within this chamber. And so we essentially agree with the thrust of this motion, to be honest. You'll see from our amendment that we highlighted other things as well as the all-important investment in Liverpool, highlighted things such as environmental protection, the protection of workers' rights that we think are also extremely important things that we value within the EU. And so actually we've had a discussion amongst ourselves and one of the main things that concerns Green Party members within this motion is actually celebrating the growth of Liverpool John Lennon Airport. Airport expansion is an affinity to a lot of people within the Green Party. So probably without that, we would be more than happy to actually vote in favour along with yourselves. So we are going to propose directly to the rise of the motion that if we could have a minor amendment to remove that, mention that, withdraw our motion and just all favour. We never said that we're opposed to Liverpool having an airport. We're just opposed to say a vote in yes for it. In that case...
Okay, can we just...
In that case, we'll move the amendment and councillor Brown will speak to the amendment.
Councillor Small? Well, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to accept the amendment. But first of all, I just congratulate councillor Connor on his speech. I thought that was an excellent contribution that sets out, I think, why Liverpool should get behind the Remain campaign for the EU. I think it would be a complete disaster for this city if the UK were to move out of the EU. Lord Mayor, I sit on the European Social Investment Committee of the Structural Investment Fund Committee of the Left and I represent the combined authority on that. And I've seen firsthand when we're evaluating the next European programme for 2014 to 2020, the benefits that that will bring to this city, whether it's with Liverpool in work, whether it's with supporting businesses, whether it's supporting people to start up businesses, whether it's tackling the issue of youth unemployment. Without that funding, without the UK being an active member of the EU, that would not exist in Liverpool and this city would be a lot worse off for that. And councillor Bradford and others, your sceptics may well say, "Well, UK is a net contributor into the EU and it's our money that we're giving, we're just getting that back." That's nonsense when you've got a Tory government that has disinvested year on year into Liverpool. And if you look at what happened with Objective One in 1994, we'd had 15 years of factionism, 15 years of cuts, 15 years of disinvestment into this city, of this city being on the decline and what we managed to achieve in that time with Objective One. And if you look at where Liverpool is today, we are no longer one of the poorest parts of Europe because we traded our way out of that. We viewed that Objective One funding to grow our economy and to get jobs and we built on that. The other reason, Lord Mayor, that we need to get behind this as a city is because of the benefits to the economy. With companies like Jaguar and Rover, with the automotive supply chain in South Liverpool, with life sciences, with pharma, none of those companies would come to Liverpool and would invest in this city if we weren't an active part of the EU. And the debate earlier on, Lord Mayor, like I remember, I think is really significant because Liverpool is, I think, quite uniquely placed to take advantage of where we are with the EU but also with a wider global economy. We need to be a part of that. What this motion is asking for is for this chamber, for this council, to get behind the Remain campaign, to go away, to ask the chief executive to go away, to build on the work that we did with the Mayor, European Commission, and to set out what the benefits are for the UK, for Liverpool, remaining within the EU and what the negatives are if we were to leave, how that would damage this city and to bring that back to this chamber so we can have a debate as part of that national debate, as part of the referendum before 2017.
Councillor Brown?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Can I just say to begin with that we, the Green Party, are in favour of remaining in the European Union, opposing the sort of thrust of motion. What we'd like to say is that the EU has benefits through improvements to air pollution, through regulation of high EU directives, since 1984 included in the 1988 Large Combustion Plants Directive, which regulates the emissions of sulfur dioxide and nitrogen dioxide. Catalyst converters on vehicles have been mandatory on petrol vehicles since 1992 and diesel vehicles since 2008. More needs to be done, of course, because we do know that we have problems with air pollution still, but these have been a good start to the process and changing our reputation from what we used to be known as the dirty man of Europe. There's also been improvements to water and soil pollution through EU directives since 1986. We've had cleaner bathing water since 1998 and in the 1950s, the Thames, which was biologically dead, now retains many species of fish and even seals and dolphins as far as the ocean. We've got better wildlife protection through the 1979 Wild Bird Directive and the 1992 Habitat Directive, which has led to the establishment of a Europe-wide network of protected sites called Natura 2000. More recently, we've cooperated in setting targets for reduced emissions which contribute to climate change. As councillor Connor pointed out, we've had improved employment rights through the Working Time Directive, which puts a limit of 48 hours per week on full-time work. Guaranteed maternity leave of 14 weeks for mothers and young people benefit from various programmes and with as high levels of youth employment, the European Parliament's Youth Employment Initiative. As a consequence, we want to see a reformed EU which has the following, and that is to build support for radical reform of the EU, increasing its transparency and accountability, to refocus its objectives on cooperation and environmental sustainability rather than competition of free trade and to campaign for the rights of member states to exercise greater control over their own economies. Thank you.
Could I ask, could I just ask members to refrain from talking in the chamber? Obviously, because the debate goes on. Could I ask councillor Fendergast? Could I ask councillor Pendleghast?
Yes, progress. Can I just say, having been involved, well, a few members still in the council, I haven't seen, so you have 94 others, when Objective One was still, was first brought to the city. And since then, I've had very little help and support from actual government, Tory side, providing much funding. Liverpool under the Labour administration and along with the industry, set up the Merseyside Special Investment Fund. That was set up around 1995, 1996 and is still running in its various form, helping hundreds of companies and organisations to get on if they can't get off the bankers, to top up to enable them to expand and create jobs. Even today, we've had the Newport Field Haulings that they're heavily, you can call it subsidized, finance corp, what you want, there's money off your building that port. This port now exports more than ever did. There's a bigger traffic through the port in its containerisation and that will drastically increase when you get the pan-ocean ships coming in. That's being paid for by European funds. Last time we had a transe European phone coming through, this council supported...